The Leominster City Council Meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leominster, 978-466-1922.
This is on Petition 7918, David R Cormier install a stop sign on Sawtell Road against eastbound drivers at Central Street. Is there any counselor on legal affairs wish to comment or have any questions? Any other individual counselors wish to comment or have any questions? Does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does anyone in the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 7918? Third and final time, does anyone in the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 7918? Unless there's any objection, Mr. President, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you. We had a concern last meeting about speaking into the mics and make sure they're on, so if you can all just kind of double check, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we have a second hearing before the Leominster City Council. This is Petition 80-18, David R Cormier install a stop sign on Litchfield Street against northbound drivers at Lancaster Street. Does the other counselor present from legal affairs have any comments or questions? Any other individual counselors have any comments or questions on Petition 80-18? Are there any members of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 80-18? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 80-18? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 80-18? Unless there's any objection, Mr. President, I would close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Moving on, this is a hearing before the city council. This is Petition 81-18, David R Cormier install a stop sign on Tossie Street against eastbound drivers at Central Street. Does the other member of legal affairs have any questions or comments on this petition? Does any other counselor have a question or a comment on Petition 81-18? Does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 81-18? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 81-18? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 81-18? Unless there's an objection, Mr. President, I'll declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have another hearing before the Leominster City Council. This is Petition 82-18, David R Cormier install a stop sign on Columbus Street against westbound drivers at Litchfield Street. Does the other member of legal affairs who's present tonight have any questions or comments? Does any other individual counselor have a question or a comment on Petition 82-18? Seeing none, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 82-18? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to speak in front of the council either in favor of or against Petition 82-18? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 82-18? Seeing none, unless there's any objection, Mr. President, I declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you.
And moving right along, this is a hearing before the Leominster City Council. This is Petition 83-18, David R Cormier install a stop sign on Columbus Street against eastbound drivers at Ruth Street. Does the counselor present from legal affairs have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Does any other individual counselor have a question or a comment on Petition 83-18? Does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 83-18? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 83-18? Seeing none, and unless there's any objection, Mr. President, I declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you. We were not in session right now. The office was scurrying today to get our hands on the resurfacing schedule, just so everyone would be able to have a copy of it tonight, so we're able to obtain, as you can see, late afternoon today. Yeah. If you don't have yours, I have a copy for you if you want it. Can you get a copy? Check that, your prep packet, just go put it in late. Start the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, with the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given if necessary. We don't have anyone signed up. Would anyone like to come to the speaker and address the council? Second time, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. Thank you. You guys came on a real soft knife. You should have been here last spring when we're doing the school budget.
Member term to expire April 15, 2019, Michelle Hagstrom, 152 Sacramento Drive in Leominster. Michelle, you want to come up here? Hi, Michelle.
Hi, how are you?
Want to make sure, is that on?
I think so.
Is it?
It sound like it's on?
No.
No.
Red light on, Michelle.
Press the red.
How's that?
That's good.
Okay.
So that was your first test.
Can turn a button off.
Yes. So, Michelle, I just had a little chat with you before the hearing, and we'll just let the council know that, you know, I've known Michelle since she was a college student, and she worked in the Office of Admissions at Pittsburgh State, and even then, she was very mature and responsible, so, I mean, I know that for a fact. So what I told Michelle is that we will ask her to give us a little bit of a biography, and then explain to us and the public what you feel as though you can offer to the Board of Appeals. And just for the public knowledge, I'm Gail Feckley, the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, and Counsel Frida is the clerk, and Counsel Dabrowski is the third member. Okay, so if you just want to give us a little bit of an idea of why you would want to serve on the Board of Appeals, which is kind of like the Supreme Court of, you know, the decision-making on permits and variances and situations where somebody wants to take an appeal of the building inspector's decision, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Michelle Hagstrom, I've been in the area all of my life, pretty much. Graduated from Pittsburgh State and Pittsburgh High, as well as Mount Munchus Community College. I'm a Realtor, and I'm also a certified public accountant. I've been a Realtor for about seven years or so, so mostly in Worcester and Middle Six Counties. I've been, over the last seven years, in getting involved in the government affairs at the local and state levels at the Realtor Association, so it kind of opened my eyes out that, you know, there's more that we can do, and it's good to have awareness of what's going on and what you can have for an impact. So I thought, you know, this would be a good fit to get involved in local government, to give back a little bit, and also to better my understanding and help where I can in the local community.
And so you've passed, you've served on some board directors and finance committees and several committees.
Yes, so at the North Central Mass Association of Realtors, I was the president in 2016, and I was on the Board of Directors for probably a five-year span. Two of those years, I was the treasurer of the board, and I've also been on the Finance Committee at State, as well as the Board of Directors in the State Association.
And you got involved in some of the recent elections, too?
Yes.
So you've been involved in the community in that way?
Yeah, so I'm the state political coordinator for the Massachusetts Association for Senator Tran, as well as, before that, Jennifer Flanagan, when she had her seat. So, involved in that way.
And then just tell, we just have a couple of things about how you work in the community with United Way.
Yep, so I've been working with the United Way probably since around 2010. Start, I don't know how familiar you are with the United Way activities, but they go out to different agencies and do site visits, and assess how the agencies are doing in regards to certain criteria, and then they come back to the United Way, and the United Way assesses who's going to get funding. So I started doing site visits, then after that, more of a review, overall review, and then in the last couple of years, I've been on their investment team, so where we come together and we make decisions on who actually gets the limited funding, because there's so much need, but there's only so many funds to go around. So, I enjoy working with the United Way as well.
I know that Counsel Frida had mentioned to me a while ago that you were interested in getting more involved in the community, but it seems like you've really immersed yourself already quite a bit in the community, so, you know, it's great that you're willing to give even more of your time, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Counsel Frida if she has any questions or comments for you.
I don't have a lot of questions, but I do have a lot of comments. I've known Michelle for a long time, and she's underestimating her involvement. She's quite a motivator in terms of getting other people involved, and as the president of the board, was very, very strong in getting other Realtors to participate, communication-wise and other. So, and obviously, as a Realtor, familiarity with zoning issues when you're trying to sell something, planning issues, right up your alley, and have dealt with a lot of them. So, I'm very happy to see you here. I've been pushing for you for a while, and I'm glad to see that you're coming on board in an area that you're very familiar with. So, you have my vote.
Thanks, Claire.
No, it's just good to see quality people volunteering for these jobs, so just welcome aboard and good luck.
Thank you.
Any other counselors have any questions, comments? President?
Michelle, thank you very much. My only question is why the zoning Board of Appeals? I mean, you could serve on any board and be a great asset. That seems to be the one you want to go toward.
Well, actually, that was the open seat, so either the planning board, zoning board, any of those, or any, actually, any opening that's available to get my feet in and to get exposure, and then to become more involved.
So if, so as an alternate, you're correct, you may not be doing too much participation based on the attendance. If another position came up, would you be willing to get involved with that?
Yes, most definitely.
It's good to know. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other counselor, question, comment? Okay. Michelle, thank you very much. I agree with all the comments that have been made, that you'd be a great fit, and I'm certainly going to be asking the council to approve your nomination tonight, your appointment tonight, so you can stay if you'd like for that. I'm going to ask the President to move your appointment up on the calendar, okay?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President, do you want me to start the?
Sure, I think it's okay, isn't it? It's up to you, you know, a couple of minutes, or you need more time than that?
I think we're right on the clock, so we should wait.
Okay, all right. Good idea. Young man, we're going to start the meeting at 7:30 sharp. If you, when we do, if you would like to come into the chambers and stand behind that table, I'll ask Counsel Feckley to introduce you, if that's okay, if you can introduce yourself, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry. I know. The hiccup was no few, I guess. In a row. Yeah, it's just too much accommodation, really is. You mind giving us your name, your grade, and your school? How's that sound?
And they are from Troop 12, Leominster, Lady Lake Boy Scouts, and they are working towards an Eagle Scout badge. This is one of the requirements.
I'm Spencer Hollywood. I'm a senior at Luster High School.
Spencer.
I'm Lucas Gallow. I'm a freshman at Leominster High School.
Lucas.
I'm Daniel Revard. I'm in seventh grade at Skyview.
I'm Ryan Revard. I'm currently a senior at St. John's High School in Truysburg.
Nice to meet you. What would you like us to do, sit or stand?
Stand.
All right. Please stand. It's all yours, gentlemen.
Let's get a salute.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a teacher's republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you very much. Again, double check your mics, please. We'll begin with the road call vote of the honorable members of the council. Begin with Counsel Frida.
Here.
Counsel Dabrowski.
Present.
Counsel Schelle Foulziffer.
Present.
Counsel Feckley.
Present.
Counsel Ottinger.
Present.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counsel David Cormier.
Present.
Eight members present this evening, Madam Clerk, thank you very much. Do we have any records?
I have no records this evening, Mr. President.
Okay, no records tonight, that's fine. Before we get into communications from the mayor, tomorrow is a day of remembrance in the United States of America because of what happened in the tragedy of September 11, 2001. So on behalf of all those who lost their lives and all the families left behind, if we can just have a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. It's hard to believe it's been 17 years. We now move on to orders.
I'd like to make a motion for recess, so we can have the other interview first.
Oh, that's all right, too. Thank you. Is that great? All is a favor? Okay, we're recessed. Thank you for reminding me. Mary, come on in.
Thank you. Mary Newton, 129 Johnny Appleseed Lane in Leominster. The mayor has sent down a letter requesting that she join the communications unit at the Office of Emergency Management. And Mary, I'll read into the record, a letter that we received from James LeBlanc, the acting director. With this letter, I'm requesting the appointment of one new volunteer to the Office of Emergency Management, Mary Newton. Mary would like to join our communications unit. She was in the Air Force and has numerous certifications. She has a master's in education from Pittsburgh State, and her husband is a Leominster firefighter. Mary will be a huge asset to emergency management in our community, and we cannot wait to have her join our team of volunteers. She has been interviewed by the OEM, Assistant Deputy Directors, and myself, and was found to be worthy. A query has been run, and she does not have a court record. Thank you for your consideration of this request. So we have you here, Mary, because, you know, Mr. LeBlanc obviously thinks very highly of you and would like you to join the Office of Emergency Management, and the mayor agreed, so he sent your name down here to us for confirmation. And just for the record again, I'm Gail Feckley, the Chairwoman of Ways and Means. Our clerk is Claire Frida, and John Dabrowski is our third member. So what we do is have you down so that the public gets to know you, and we get to know you, and you get to know us a little bit. And what I'd like you to do is just kind of give us a little bit of a bio. We have your resume here, and I see that you've served in Massachusetts National Guard, and specifically with MEMA and FEMA, which is, you know, very impressive. So, just a little background, and then how you feel you could contribute to the Office of Emergency Management.
Absolutely. My name is Mary Newton. I served in the military for 23 years. Over half of that was active duty, and then actually, I went into the National Guard, which is the traditional one week in a month, two weeks out of the year situation. And then I was actually brought on full-time with the Massachusetts National Guard to help stand up an emergency response mission here in the Massachusetts to cover FEMA Region 1. So I've been doing that for the, probably, last 13 years of my career, has been emergency management, on the medical operations and plans portion of it. I'm a resident of Leominster, I've been in Leominster now for about 12 years. I would like to just take my experience that I've learned through, you know, nationwide experience, and my state involvement with emergency operations, and bring it here to Leominster and help continue serving at the local level within the community.
So it seems like you've already been honed for this type of thing, for sure, in your, you know, participation with so many years.
Correct, yes.
In just this type of thing, emergency response.
Correct, yeah. It was, yeah, it was my, my emergency management was my job for the past 13 years in the military.
And then you didn't touch upon these, but you have many, many certifications.
Correct. Because we were a military unit, and we were going to be integrated within the civilian agencies, we had to go through all the civilian certifications to include civilian language. I mean, military, we joke about all the jargon that we used. Well, with my mission, we didn't use any of that jargon. We actually had to be trained in the communication systems and what the civilians use, and we would utilize that as part of our mission. So, we were actually embedded, and our mission was to work with civilians. We weren't a military unit that came in and took control. We would actually branch off, because we were trained in several different areas, and we would actually branch off some of our areas and integrate them in with local fire departments and within MEMA and FEMA, and those missions were utilized for, whether it be a standby mission for a major event that was going on within the state or within the FEMA region, but also for natural disasters such as hurricanes, tornadoes, flooding, those kind of missions as well.
And as you know, that would be the response that we would need from somebody like you on communications, you know, unit.
Correct. And, correct. And after I retired, I wasn't in emergency response right away. I was teaching within the Leominster school system, and I've, obviously, I got my master's degree in education, but it's just something that I desire, love, I actually, I really enjoy it, kind of have a passion for it. So, actually, as I was talking to people, people recommend, why don't you go over to OEM? And I thought about it, you know, and I decided, point now, that because I've been out for a couple of years, I kind of want to get back into it. Communications is very important. If you don't have communications, you're not going to get anything done. And I also feel that I have, you know, the experience with operations, logistics, planning, communications. I've always had a communication, you know, my commo guy I go to, so I kind of want to get into communications as well, just so, because I could learn the intricate details of the radios, and I understand how they interact, but I want to find out how Leominster does it, integrating with the other agencies within the town.
All right, and just for the public's knowledge, you also have certification in pre-hospital trauma life support, in medical preparedness and response to bombing incidents?
That is correct. That was also, because we were a C-Burn mission, which is another, it's an acronym for weapons of mass destruction, but it's chemical, biological, radioactive, nuclear, and high-yield explosives. That's technically what we were trained to go into, so that is correct. We would actually go to the bombing training, to how to respond to it, not only how to respond, but how terrorists plan it, you know? Where are they going to place these items? Because that's something we had to always be aware of, too, because you're in a situation, you always had to be looking to see, is there going to be a secondary issue that we're going to run into, something? So it was not only studying it, researching, understanding it, what precautions we would have to take even for us going in, as well as we would study international terrorism as well, because there are other countries that have had incidents happen to them, so we'd actually have to study what they did and what they learnt, and then we would apply it to our mission as well.
That's great. Maybe you're overqualified for this. You've got a lot going on. That's wonderful, really, very, very interesting, you know, very interesting. Thank you very much for all of that, and thank you for being willing to volunteer for the city of Leominster. Because it seems like you're a very busy person, and so, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I'm going to pass on to Counsel Frida.
There is absolutely nothing that I could ask. I'm just sitting here thinking how really lucky we are, that someone like you and the previous applicant really will take the time and offer it back to the community. I mean, we are just so fortunate. I mean, your credentials are incredible, and to still be excited about it after all the years you spent doing it, and to do it voluntarily is just a real home run for us, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dabrowski?
No, just another, you know, another top-notch, you know, candidate. Just thank you very much, you know, it's appreciated far more than, you know... you very much. You know, it's appreciated far more than, you know. So good luck, and thank you.
Any other, Council Schelle Foziffer?
Yep. Thank you very much. The Office of Emergency Management, I think, is a real jewel here in the city of Lemmonster. It's come a long way over the past few years. So one thing that I, in looking at your experience, and, you know, all of the technical training in the Air Force, not the Air Force training, but your military training, there seems to be a real opportunity for you to do some training. I mean, is that something that you would be interested in, training other volunteers?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, because your, the breadth of the things that you've been involved in, and the kind of experience would really be useful.
Absolutely. I would enjoy that.
Good. Thank you.
Any other counselor? Council Mashad?
Mary, this is amazing. I wish you could see the expression on the four guys behind you while you were talking about this thing. They were just like, you know, in awe. I am also. So thank you. Now Shane is your husband.
Correct.
So with all due respect to Robbie Silo, I consider the two of you the first family of public safety now in Lemmonster, you know. But this is amazing, you know, and we just do your thing, you know. Just, I know that your director, Jimmy, is probably excited to have you, and for you to bring such expertise and professionalism, you know, in areas that they may not even have thought about in the past is just amazing. So thank you for, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Any other questions?
I didn't even want to ask her. Shane was her husband. I didn't want to take that away from you.
She owned up to it. Mary, thank you very much for coming tonight. You have a very unique background that, you know, would be perfect fit for Office of Emergency Management. So certainly, I will, you know, going to be recommending that the committee confirm you. So, and again, I'm going to be moving the confirmations, asking the president to move the confirmations up, so you can stay to hear the vote. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Take care of it. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Okay, we're back in session. We'll deviate from the norm. We're going to go right to Ways and Means Veterans Affairs. First appointment, Michelle Hagstrom is the chairwoman ready to report.
I am, Mr. President. We have Michelle Hagstrom here this evening. She is a candidate for Board of Appeals alternate member. Michelle has quite a bit of experience in the real estate venue, which certainly will be of value to a committee such as the Board of Appeals. She's a certified public accountant. She's been involved in the community in many different ways, including charitable organizations and political campaigns. She's just, you know, kind of a woman of many trades, and we're very, very pleased that she is interested in serving on the Board of Appeals. So my recommendation would be that we would confirm her appointment, and I'll go to the committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Council Frida.
Absolutely.
There are a member, Council Dabrowski.
I agree.
Please requalify.
Mr. President, we have a unanimous recommendation to confirm the appointment of Michelle Hagstrom to the Board of Appeals, alternative member term to expire 4/15/2019.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselors heard that recommendation read for confirmation. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote for confirmation, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Schelle Foziffer.
Yay.
Council Dabrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a y by a vote of eight to nothing. Confirmation is taking place. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
We now move to Mary Newton as the chairwoman ready to report.
I am, Mr. President. We had Mary Newton here this evening. She is a candidate for communications unit for the Office of Emergency Management. She's come with a very high recommendation from the acting director, Mr. LeBlanc. Mary's resume is beyond unique and impressive. She has supported the agencies that report to the MEMA and FEMA. She has many, many certifications. She's spent 17 years in Massachusetts National Guard, not to mention she has an extensive education background, including a master of education, an elementary education from Pittsburgh State University. So also being the wife of a firefighter, Mary basically kind of lives this type of emergency management life. I think she'd be an excellent addition, and as the counselor to the left of me indicated, she could probably be a valued trainer for the people at the OEM. So I'm very pleased to recommend her confirmation to the Office of Emergency Management.
Thank you. I yield the floor to the clerk, Council Frida.
I agree.
There are a member, Council Dabrowski.
I agree.
Madam Chair, please qualify.
We have a unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, to confirm the appointment of Mary Newton to communications unit of the Office of Emergency Management.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselors heard the recommendation read for the confirmation of Mrs. Newton to the Office of Emergency Management. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Dabrowski.
Yay.
Council Schelle Foziffer.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall record a y by a vote of eight to nothing. Mrs. Newton is confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, we'd be remiss without thanking you for your service to the country as well.
Yes.
I appreciate that. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
We now move on to communications from the mayor, beginning with Communication 16. And before I move forward, the assistant clerk will be swearing you in at this point, the two new members of the community. Thank you. Communication 16.
Thank you, Council President. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $200,000 to the landfill expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding mechanic street landfill repairs.
Council Pauline Cormier will be filling in as the chairperson tonight. Madam Chair.
This is the first time on the agenda, regular course, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair, regular course. Communication 17.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $26,000 to the election registration expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding election-related additional expenses.
Communication 17, again, is referred to the chairwoman of Finance.
This, again, first time on the agenda, regular course, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, regular course. We now move on to petitions, the first time on the calendar, beginning with 11-19.
Heather Brant Hoover and 10 registered voters accept Daniel Drive as an accepted road in the city of Lemmonster.
11-19 is referred to the chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, with a referral to the Planning Board and the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 11-19 is given regular course with referral to the Plenary Board and Department of Public Works. Thank you. I'm going to yield the floor to Council Frida.
Through the chair. Was this a zoning board issue years ago when they built the road? There were a lot of...
I'm not certain of that.
I, I had the same question. We'll look into that.
There was a lot of discussion about Danielle Drive before they built it, so.
All right, so if it's, if it's okay with the chair, and we're going to refer this to our files and reference ZBA, and see if there's anything that came up. Council Frida, I'm going to ask you if you can follow through with that. Maybe you might have a timeline that you can assist the clerk with. All right, thank you. So regular course on 11-19. We're getting referral to the Plenary Board, DPW, and ZBA research. Thank you. We now move on to 12-19.
National Grid, install one singular own pole on Church Street, beginning at a point approximately 120 feet northeast of the center line of intersection of Merrim Ave, and continuing approximately 15 feet in an east direction.
12-19 is referred to the chairwoman of public service.
Regular course, Mr. President, and we have to establish a hearing. I don't have a date. I think we have to establish a hearing, don't we?
Usually we do it the second time, it's on the calendar.
I'm sorry?
If we pass, if we pass it at the next meeting, then we'll establish it at that point.
I thought we set the hearing on regular course. No? Okay. We usually do. That's, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
October 9th.
We'll, we'll do it at the next meeting.
If that's not a problem? Okay, so anticipate October 9th on that. We're just, we're playing with the time schedule right now, with the, with the shift from 7:30 to 7:00, and also a couple of informational meetings we have to have. So if you just have patience with that, I appreciate it. So again, 12-19 has been given regular course. We now move on to matters before the city council. We'll begin with the Finance Department, Finance Chair. Does the chairwoman have a financial report tonight, or you want to waive that for next meeting?
It's up to you, Mr. President.
Go ahead. If you have it, go for it.
I have it.
Go ahead.
Mr. President.
Sure, please.
The, we had a beginning balance of $15,113,865.09. On the last meeting, we had two sources of increases. The first was an interest earnings of $19,420.16, and the appropriation transfer to increase the stabilization fund balance of $4 million, for a total additions of $4, 019,420.16. At the last meeting, we appropriated the police vehicles capital outlay of $323,000, as well as the building demolition capital outlay expenses of $38,000, and sanitation and drainage capital outlay expenses of $135,000. On the agenda tonight, there are three additional appropriations that were submitted. C-12, which would be $32,000, C-16, which would be $200,000, and C-17, which would be $26,000. If those were approved tonight, we would have total deductions of $754,000, which would leave us at a balance on, as of today's date, subject to the appropriations and transfers and approvals, of $18,379,285.25.
And you are the acting chair tonight, and you came up with that report. That is like a grand slam. Put that right into the Red Sox cleanup hitter. Nice job. Okay, we'll begin with, are there any questions on the finance report? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We now move on to the finance. Communication 12 is the chairwoman ready to report.
I am, Mr. President. C-12, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative to the appropriation of $32,000 to the ITTF expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund, and this is in, it's regarding the Microsoft Office licenses. It would be, my position would be to grant this. I'd ask you to poll the other, third member of the committee.
I yield the floor to Council David Cormier.
I agree.
Please qualify.
It would be the unanimous recommendation to grant Communication 12.
Thank you. That's an annual expense, I believe, correct?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Counselors heard the recommendation read for favorable granting of Communication 12. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication is granted. Does the chairwoman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order the appropriation of $32,000 to the ITTF expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Move for the adoption of the order.
Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you. Counselors heard that recommendation read. Are communication 12, are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, the order's adopted. Thank you. We now move on to Communication 13. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication 13, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative to the appropriation of $6,000 to the parking meter salary and wages account, seem to be transferred from the parking meter receipts reserved for appropriation account, and this would be the funding for the parking enforcement officer.
Right.
It would be, my position to grant C-13, and I'd ask you to poll the third committee, Madam.
I yield the floor to Council David Cormier.
I agree.
Please qualify, Madam Chair.
Be the unanimous recommendation to grant Communication C-13.
Thank you for the report. Counselors heard that recommendation read to grant. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication 13's been granted. Does the chairwoman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order that $6,000 be transferred to the parking meter salary and wages account, and that would be transferred from the parking meter receipts reserved for appropriation account. Move for adoption of the order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselors heard that recommendation read. Are there any other comments or questions? Council Frida.
Just a clarification. These don't require two-thirds votes, I don't believe, transferring from one to the other. I know the stabilization does.
Okay.
But I don't, just, just so.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we're just looking for a majority vote, then. It's your opinion. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on Communication 13? If not, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Madam Chair. We now move on to Communication 14.
Communication 14, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative to the appropriation of $6,000 to the parking meter expense account, seem to be transferred from the parking meter receipts reserved for appropriation account, and this refers to the parking facility and general parking expenses. Mr. President, it would be my position to grant C-14, and I'd ask you to poll the third member of the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I yield the floor to Counselor David Cormier.
I agree.
Please qualify.
Be the unanimous recommendation to grant Communication C-14.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant Communication 14. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairwoman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order that the amount of $6,000 to be transferred from the parking meter receipts reserved for appropriations account to the parking meter expense account. Move for adoption of the order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselors heard that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Madam Chair. We now move on to Communication 15.
C-15, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative to the appropriation of $1,119,490 to the street resurfacing expense account, seem to be transferred from the highway state aid revenue reserved for appropriation. Mr. President, it would be my position to grant C-15.
Thank you.
And ask you to poll my, the third member.
Thank you. I yield the floor to Counselor David Cormier.
I agree. And also, just a side note, we did get the street list of what, the streets that'll be paved this fall as well. So if anybody wants to know, it'll be on file in the clerk's office. Thank you.
As well. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, please qualify.
It'd be the unanimous recommendation to grant C-15.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselors heard that recommendation read to grant Communication 15. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, the petition is granted by a vote of eight to nothing. Does the chairwoman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order the amount of $1,119,490 to be transferred from the highway state aid revenue reserved for appropriation to the street resurfacing expense account. Move for adoption of the order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselors heard that recommendation read. Are there any comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you very much. And thank you for filling in tonight for the chair, and we appreciate it. Great job. We now move on to page four. We're dealing with legal affairs. We'll begin with Communication 1. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication 1, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella requests that the city council approve petition 1 and authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation substantially in the form as set forth below, relating to the city making payment on a certain unpaid bill to Royal Steam Heater Company. Provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the mayor approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the mayor is hereby authorized to approve amendments, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. We are still waiting for referrals from, from the mayor, the city solicitor, the purchasing agent, the school department, the comptroller. You know, essentially, just to, I'm, personally, I'm happy to approve this, but I think we need to make sure that the work was done, the work was done properly, the warranties, if any, are in place. There's policies in place to make sure this doesn't happen again. And I think Council Frida had brought up a very good point last time, and again, earlier this evening, that she would like to see the legislation. So again, my recommendation would be further time, and I just defer to Council Frida as well.
Council Frida?
I agree with further time. I've got some comments to make as well.
Okay.
So the recommendation from Legal Affairs, Mr. President, is for further time on Communication 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation read on Communication 1 for further time. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? I will yield the floor back to the second member. Council Frida.
This is difficult, because obviously, the gentleman did the work, company did the work, and we want them to get paid if everything is appropriate. But the last time we went through this, for how long we did with, for Stephen Mulaney, to get paid, the final legislation that came out pretty much indicated that the city council made the error. And I'm not going to put my name to anything that indicates it's our fault, because we have to approve it. And if you read the line where it says that the mayor is authorized to And if you read the line where it says that the mayor is authorized to approve the amendment, we never saw those, those amendments the last time. So I would, you know, whether we have to get in touch with, um, Representative Higgins or Senator Tran, somebody can get us that legislation because I'm not going to, and I think it has to be pretty much unanimous before the legislature will look at it. But I'm not going to put my name to anything that, that indicates we might have some part in this.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor of further time on Communication one, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, I will take it upon myself to make sure that I'm going to personally contact each one of these referrals by phone call or conversation and make sure we have something in front of us for the twenty-fourth. All right? Okay, good. We now move on to seven dash nineteen. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Unless there's an objection, I, I think I can take seven nineteen and nine nineteen and block.
Is there any objection to that? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, petition seven nineteen, Mark C. Bedanza and Susan Shalaf Ozerfer, request to delete section two sixteen of the revised ordinance for the City of Leominster and insert in its place a new section two sixteen as follows. Section two dash sixteen, regular meetings. Except as herein after stated, regular meetings of the city council shall be held on the second and fourth Monday evenings of each month at seven o'clock P.M. Whenever a meeting falls on a legal holiday, it shall be held the following night at the same time. Whenever a meeting falls on the evening before New Year's Day, it shall be held on the next night following the holiday at the same time. No meeting shall be held during the week of Christmas. Petition nine dash nineteen, Mark C. Bedanza and Susan Shalaf Ozerfer, request to amend the city council rules of procedure, namely Rule One, meetings, by changing the time of Monday evening meetings from seven-thirty P.M. to seven o'clock P.M. Uh, we have a public hearing scheduled on both seven nineteen and nine nineteen for September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, seven nineteen is at six fifteen P.M. Nine nineteen is at six twenty P.M. Uh, so given the public hearing schedule, uh, the, the recommendation is for further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, the recommendation for further time on seven nineteen and nine nineteen. Are there any questions or comments? For clarification, when we come to the vote after the hearing, we will do them individually because one's a rule change and the other accordingly, you know, the, the ordinance piece. Uh, but tonight, we're voting in block? So all those in favor?
I just, I, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if it's appropriate to do this now or wait, but there is a sentence in here I think I want to make a motion to remove because it really doesn't make any sense.
Which, uh, petition are you referring to, Mr.?
Uh, uh, the, uh, seven dash nineteen.
Okay.
Um, it says, whenever a meeting falls on the evening before New Year's Eve, it shall be held on the next night following the holiday at the same time. If we have our meetings on the second and fourth Monday of every month, there is no way possible that the thirty-first could fall on the second or fourth Monday. So that, it just doesn't make any sense. Like, that, that can be deleted out of there. I don't know why that language is in there. It's probably old language, but it, it, it's not relevant.
It'd be New Year's Day.
It's not relevant because you, you couldn't possibly have a meeting on the thirty-first. It could not possibly be the fourth Monday of, of the month.
Okay, I'm going to let the clerk clarify that?
It's actually in reference to New Year's Day, not New Year's Eve.
But it, it talks about the evening before New Year's Day. If the meeting falls on the evening before New Year's Day. So what they're suggesting is that we could have a meeting on New Year's Eve. It's, it's not possible. The fourth Monday of the month could not fall on the thirty-first. So that sentence needs to be deleted. It just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I see what you mean on that. This year, it does fall that way?
No.
Yeah, but that's all election.
Okay.
It's not possible.
I just, I, I.
Uh, first of all, let me go to Counselor Shalaf Ozerfer. She's the, uh, the co-petitioner. The other one's not here tonight. Are you okay with that?
Excuse me. I'm just looking at my calendar to see if there's any possibility that that would ever happen. Um, I, I would actually prefer if we amended it when the, um, when Counsel Bedanza was here as well because he is also a co-author. If that's a, I, I think that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Counsel Frida?
Um, just to follow up on that. We usually have our organizational meeting, uh, right after New Year's Day as well. So, I mean, it could be conflicting, or they could just be the, I mean, it is a meeting.
Okay. Just, uh, we do, by giving it further time, uh, Counsel Bedanza will be able to, uh, work with the co-petitioner off the floor, get it resolved, and bring it back as an amendment or not when it's time to vote on it. That, that's okay with everyone? Okay, let's, if there's no other comment, let's just move the question. Um, so seven dash nineteen, we're all set. Nine nineteen, any questions on that? Okay, Counsel, sir, the recommendation for further time on each in block. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, further time has been awarded to seven dash nineteen and nine dash nineteen in block. Thank you very much. We now move on to ten dash nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. President.
Take your time on that.
Petition ten nineteen is New View liabilities to assets. Um, I've got a letter I'll read. It's sort of a new concept. There's a letter dated August twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen from the petitioner, whose address is four seventy Main Street, Pittsburgh, Massachusetts. Uh, it's addressed to the Leominster City Council. Dear members of the Leominster City Council, on behalf of New View Communities, I am pleased to provide you with this brief narrative about an innovative use of a Chapter one twenty-one A corporation to stabilize neighborhoods, remove blight, and promote homeownership in Leominster. New View liabilities to assets is a new corporation that we formed by creating a partnership among the municipalities of Athol, Clinton, Pittsburgh, Gardner, Leominster, and New View Communities to convert properties that have been vacant for at least three years into owner-occupied homes for hard-working Leominster families. Our goal is to renovate thirty-five to forty homes in the region, which can translate into renovating approximately seven homes in Leominster. We have worked closely with Mayor Mazzarella and his team over the past year to develop this program, and the mayor has been a strong advocate for Leominster and for the program. I have attached a short, one-page description of the program to this letter. We are asking for the city council's support of the program as required by Chapter one twenty-one A of the Massachusetts General laws. The city received the Chapter one twenty-one A application on August fourteenth and is required to hold a public hearing within forty-five days of that date. The proposed joint session and public hearing date is September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. The council and planning board are also required to issue a report based on one twenty-one A standards and make a recommendation that the city approve the program as provided by Chapter one twenty-one A. Please do not hesitate to contact me at nine seven eight three four two nine five six one or, uh, at a website, at a email address. If you have any questions, very truly yours, Mark Dohan. Um, so there is a hearing scheduled for September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen at six twenty-five P.M. My understanding is we need to have an official vote to confirm that hearing tonight, Mr. President.
Okay.
So I would ask for such a vote to be taken and also for further time.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read for further time on ten dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counsel Frida?
Through the chair to the chairman. Do we know if we're just approving the Leominster portion of this?
I think all those questions will be answered at the hearing. I, I really don't know. Um, I, 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 I think that's the case, but I, but I really don't know.
I mean, I am familiar with, um, with two or three of these because someone had asked me to look into it. And as a, if you rehab the building, uh, in, uh, with the intent of selling it to a, as an affordable property, a low-income property, they'll sell it to a developer or whoever wants to rehab it for a dollar. So I know there's some, there's some questions in there, but I think, I, I'm sure we must be just, how can we approve somebody else's unless they're just approving the whole program?
I'm gonna, if I can, I'm gonna let, we're in session, ma'am?
I'm actually from New View.
You can't speak, though. Thank you. Um, I apologize, but we're in session. We're not going to break. I'm going to yield the floor. I saw Counsel Feckley's hand went up, and then I'll explain to you. Um, I'll share with you some of the situations we've been in from the clerk's office on this matter. Okay, so go ahead, Counsel Feckley.
Actually, I was following the same, um, line of reasoning as Counsel Frida. Um, and I did see in the notice of public hearing that it only mentions the Leominster properties, but I'm still not convinced that it's just Leominster that this would be about. So, so I'm yielding the.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Counselor?
No, I, I just think that, uh, a lot of these concerns and questions can be addressed at the, at the public hearing.
Right. So if, um, we're going to take the vote first, and then I'll shed some light on the, on the matter. If that's okay?
Sure.
All right, good. Counsel Frida?
I just want to add, I support the program, um, unless there's some issues that I'm not aware of. But, I mean, Mark Dohan does a good job with this organization, so, um, I do support it. But we need to get some.
Right.
Some questions answered.
Right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, the recommendation on the floor right now is for further time on ten dash nineteen. We're going to vote on that first, and then we're going to establish the hearing because I don't give further time with the hearing on that as well. So on the petition, it's given further time. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, further time's been awarded. Mr. Chairman, could you establish the hearing for ten nineteen, please?
Yes, I believe it's been established, uh, for Sep- September twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen at six twenty-five P.M. Uh, we just need to confirm that.
It is. Thank you. Counsel, sir, the recommendation read to establish the hearing for the twenty-fourth of September at six twenty-five P.M. in the council chambers. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the hearing's been established. So I, I, I think it's important, I'm going to try to be as transparent as I can on what I know on this. It's a mess. It really is. And, um, I'm going to ask for a vote on the new business later on tonight to bring the planning director down for this hearing because right now, he is not attending, and he's indicated to the clerk that he is not attending. That's one thing.
The interim?
Yes, yes. Um, Mark, uh, the, the gentleman who has submitted this, um, he is really a, a awesome guy. He, he's very professional. He's done great work in this town. The program has, as we know, they tackled the project in Ward Two. Great success. They're tackling the biggest elephant we have in the city right now, Cotter. They're doing a great job with that. Um, they've worked very diligently to put the financing together to meet with neighborhoods, et cetera. And on this particular petition, it is a little bit hairy. It does require that we come together with the planning board in a joint hearing. It is very time-sensitive. And quite frankly, uh, this gentleman has been given the runaround in this building, and it's not necessarily all the fault of the, the building people who are involved with this because we had a transition. And I, I feel pretty confident that if Kristen was still here, there wouldn't be an issue whatsoever. But what happened was with the new, uh, acting planning director, he pretty much wanted to dump this on the clerk's office to take care of, and I said, absolutely not. This is not their job. They're running elections and taking care of, uh, the historical archiving of documents in this city. So it's been going back and forth and back and forth. Um, I did notify Mr. Sousa today that the, the acting planning director that we confirmed by unanimous vote at the last meeting indicated he's not coming to this meeting. Um, I don't know what his rationale is, uh, but in the meantime, I think it's important to have that person here or other city agents that can actually shed light. Um, as indicated, there's a finance component to it. So at one point, when we deal with, um, at, when we deal with the petition itself, it'll probably be jointly before the finance committee as well because there could be some possible tax relief involved with the whole thing. And we want to make sure that, you know, we don't just look at the legislation power without investigating the tax component as well. As you know, Bill Mitchell is great, and I'm sure he'll help us out with this if, if the mayor, um, has him as one of the leads on that piece right there. But there's a little bit of work to do, um, in the building here to make sure that on September twenty-fourth, everything's in place to have an effective meeting that's professional with all the players that need to be involved, present during that meeting. And so the counselors can ask the appropriate questions and the, the questions that will, will formulate that night as we hear the presentation. So I'm looking forward to that meeting on the twenty-fourth. Um, I hope the mayor helps to pursue the players that participate on the city side. Um, it is a little bit sensitive because time is, uh, the time is running out, and that's why we had to put it on the special meeting to get it to this tonight to make sure we have it for the twenty-fourth. So do you have any questions or anything on that? Okay, thank you. The public hearing notice only has Leominster, so. Okay, all right, good.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
I think it's important to note, too, we keep saying New View. That's a new name.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it's the old Twin City CDC, and a lot of people. Know exactly what, what they did for the communities.
Yeah, and they've been around for a while. They've done a lot of really great things. So we look forward to working with them in this capacity and hope everything goes well on the twenty-fourth. Thank you. Okay, we now move on to Ways and Means of Veterans Affairs. We took care of the two appointments earlier, and we can flip over to page five. We have Public Service Committee, eight dash nineteen. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
Who's it me, huh?
Yep, you got it.
Um, eight dash nineteen, Gail Feckley and Susan Shalaf Ozerfer, request to reduce the speed limit on Burridge Avenue from Main Street to Pier Street to twenty miles per hour. Um, I certainly support this. I put the petition in to allow the city to be able to go to twenty miles an hour for areas like this that can be identified by the, the council or the, the ward counselor. So my opinion is, uh, I'm supportive, but if you follow the other members of the committee.
Okay, very good. We'll go over to Counsel Adinger, the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member, Counsel Pauline Cormier.
I support this. I think it's at least some relief to the, to the neighbors and these poor people that came in on, on Burridge Ave. So I, I support it.
Nice. We'll now move back to the chairwoman. Are you ready to requalify?
I am. We have unanimous, uh, decision of the Public Service Committee to grant eight dash nineteen.
Counsel, sir, the recommendation read to grant eight dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions? Counsel David Cormier.
Thank you, yeah. I, I don't think we can legally make this twenty miles an hour because if you read the petition you had put in, um, when you put a petition in, it changed or it established, um, Chapter thirteen, section thirteen dash seventy-five, which is a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. So that, that was the new law, was twenty-five. I don't think we can do twenty. I mean, I'd love to, but I don't think we can. So I think what we'd be doing is adding this street to Chapter thirteen, section dash, section thirteen dash seventy-five, which is, uh, a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
I yield the floor to Counsel Feckley for response to that.
I followed, you know, what Counsel Cormier is saying regarding that, but I'm wondering now, so if we have twenty-five miles an hour, we could do twenty. We can.
I don't think so. Not, not under the new law that was through the chair. Not under the.
Go ahead.
New state law that was passed.
Right.
The first street to be passed under this law was a petition put in by Counsel, the Counsel across from me. And it established, like I said, section thirteen dash seventy-five, which is twenty-five miles an hour. an hour, I think that's the minimum we can go to. 20 miles an hour is like in a school zone, so I don't think we can legally pass a petition to make this 20.
I'm gonna go back to Council Feckley.
We have to amend it to 25.
And Council Schellof-Zephyr, what is the current speed limit there that's posted? It's legal?
It's 30.
Okay.
It's 30 because it is, I'm not even sure it's posted, to tell you the truth, but it's a densely populated area, so it's considered to be 30.
Potentially, one end might be different than the front end.
Yeah.
So, may I ask you for your consideration to maybe consider amending this to go to the minimal speed limit allowed by mass general law, so that way you're gonna be covered when they, you know, when they make the determination that it happens to be 25, you can't go, if you can't go any lower.
Yeah.
Without some type of an exception.
I'm gonna defer to the co-petitioner, because I think she has a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Yep, thank you very much. I guess my question would be, if we could ask Copman and Page, you know, can we go to 20 miles an hour? And if we can't, then I would be perfectly happy to amend it to 25.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that, but I would like to ask the question, because that is, the street is very, very different off of the Route 13 end, very different, very narrow, very steep, the other end is a little bit different.
Yep.
So that would be my recommendation, is to check with Copman and Page.
Okay, to go to Copman and Page on there?
Yep, give it further time this evening, ask the questions, it's a quick question, won't be expensive. And then if we can't, then we could amend it to 25.
Okay.
I agree with that absolutely, because I don't, I don't think that bringing it down five miles an hour is really gonna give them the relief that they're looking for. When you come off of Route 13 and you come down that curve, even without, and I've done this, even without putting your foot on the gas, you're going 30 miles an hour when you get to the end of that hill.
Right.
So they really need some serious relief.
Yeah.
That's gonna make a difference, so if there's any way possible, we could do it, I agree with the co-petitioner, that we should ask Copman and Page.
So we can investigate that with them, and what I'm gonna do is I'll ask the question in a general sense, to see if, you know, there's a possibility other streets might also be, we all have streets in our neighborhoods that could apply. Right now, we're dealing with Burridge Drive. But Council Frida?
Yeah, the Ward Three Council is correct, once he said it, I remembered, I wanted to put 20, we could not, there's a different provision for 20 miles an hour, there's something to do with, and I'm not sure exactly, so I don't wanna quote it, but it had something to do with the whole, the whole city falling under a category for 20 miles an hour. 25, we could do individual streets, which is why I put the 25 in. But it is a state law, so I don't think Copman's gonna be able to do any, any different.
Okay. Our respect to the petition is, we can ask the question, if there's any provision whatsoever, and we'll, I'll, we'll explain in a letter that, you know, the extreme traffic impact on one end is significantly different from the neighborhood on the other end, see if there's any kind of leniency, but it looks like it's probably gonna go the way that the law states.
Okay.
You all say Counselor?
Oh yeah.
Okay, Counselor?
Well, if I may, before we spend any money on illegal, on any legal advice, I would ask, when this petition for Beth Ave was put in, if the city clerk can check the file, we might already have legal opinions on this.
Okay.
You know, 'cause I think, because that, this, this street was the first one passed under that new state law that gave us the leniency to do this.
Right.
So we might already have a legal opinion on it before we waste any more money.
Okay, so we'll ask the question, if Beth Ave applies to this, if not, what's the deal? How's that sound?
That's fine, I wanna do the best we can do for the residents of Burridge Ave, so whatever we can do.
Absolutely.
You know, I'd like to try.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome, it's a great petition, thank you. Any other comments or questions on 8-19, excuse me, 8-19? Okay, and the recommendation on that is?
Further time.
Further time. Councils heard the recommendation read, all those in favor of further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, further time has been awarded, and we'll try to pursue this for the next meeting for you. You're welcome. We now move on, under Old Business, we have a second reading of the ordinance formerly Legal Affairs 79-18, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, second reading of an ordinance relative to an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lemmonster as follows, Section 13-17 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs is hereby amended by inserting the following, Sawtell Road against eastbound drivers at Central Street. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading, I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Council Frida?
I agree.
Please qualify.
Unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation read to adopt the second, to grant, right, adopt. Second reading of the ordinance formerly Legal Affairs 79-18, are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Adinger.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Excuse me, Council Schellof-Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing, the second reading has been adopted, thank you very much. We now move on to the next second reading of an ordinance formerly Legal Affairs 80-18, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, second reading of an ordinance relative to an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lemmonster as follows, Section 13-17 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs is hereby amended by inserting the following, Litchfield Street against northbound drivers at Lancaster Street. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, and I'd ask you to poll the clerk of Legal Affairs.
Council Frida?
I agree.
Please qualify.
Recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Councils heard their recommendation read, are there any comments or questions? If not, this would be a roll call vote for adoption, beginning with Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Schellof-Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Adinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall record as yay by a vote of eight to nothing, the second reading has been adopted, thank you very much. We now move on to the next second reading of an ordinance formerly Legal Affairs 81-18, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, second reading of an ordinance relative to an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lemmonster as follows, Section 13-17 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs is hereby amended by inserting the following, Tossie Street against eastbound drivers at Central Street. Again, my recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, I'd ask you to poll the clerk of Legal Affairs.
Council Frida?
I agree.
Please qualify.
Unanimous recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard their recommendation read to grant, to adopt the second reading of the ordinance formerly 81-18, are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, I'll, I'll go with the roll call, excuse me, I'm just trying to go too fast there. We'll go with the roll call vote, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Adinger.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Schellof-Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing, the order has been adopted, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move to the next second reading, which is formerly Legal Affairs 82-18, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, second reading of an ordinance relative to an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lemmonster as follows, Section 13-17 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs is hereby amended by inserting the following, Columbus Street against westbound drivers at Litchfield Street. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, I'd ask you to poll the clerk.
Second member, Council Frida?
I agree.
Please qualify.
Recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the second reading of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation read to adopt the second reading of the ordinance for Legal Affairs 82-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Schellof-Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Adinger.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing, the second reading of formerly 82-18 has been adopted. We now move on to another second reading, formerly Legal Affairs 83-18, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, second reading of an ordinance relative to an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lemmonster as follows, Section 13-17 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs is hereby amended by inserting the following, Columbus Street against eastbound drivers at Ruth Street. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, I'd ask you to poll the clerk of Legal Affairs.
I'll yield the floor to Council Frida.
I agree.
Please qualify.
The unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation read to adopt the second reading of the ordinance formerly Legal Affairs Petition 83-18, are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Dobrowski?
I just, just wanna take a moment, I just wanna commend Counselor Cormier for putting these in. They're tedious, and they're not particularly fun for me to read, but.
I got more.
He does, he does a good, he does a good job, and it's, and it's tedious work, and I just think he should be recognized for that.
Thank you very much.
He's also blowing the clerk's budget.
Yeah.
Boosting the economy. They take care of some serious business there, thank you. Any other comments? If not, this would be a roll call vote for adoption, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Adinger.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Schellof-Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing, the order has been adopted, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to new business. Any councils have any new business? Okay, so with the vote being taken this evening on the hearing date for the joint meeting with the planning board with the New View, I think it is imperative that the planning director, who we adopted, who we confirmed at our last meeting, attend that meeting, it's critical. I really would like to have his input, besides a couple of questions that he shared with us. Any questions on that? Okay, Council Frida?
Saying that he works for the planning board, the planning director ought to be able to direct him, I mean, the planning chairman.
Yeah.
Ought to be able to direct him to show up.
Right, and I'm working, and on that note, I'm working with the planning chair to reconfirm it on this level. Any questions? Okay, so the recommendation is to request by our charter, Chris Ryan, to attend the planning meeting on the 24th of September, to participate in the joint meeting with the planning board regarding the New View project. Any comments? If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, that has been qualified. I would like to also send that CC to the Personnel Director, Mr. Sousa, the Planning Board Director, and the Mayor of Lemmonster, okay? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Community calendar. Oh, there's a lot of things happening, isn't it amazing? I know that St. Leal's is having a golf tournament in October, Mike Austin's having a golf tournament in October, a scholarship fund for him. You may wanna mark your calendars, I know a lot of you will be around for the Thanksgiving game, it's home this year, and at nine o'clock that morning before the game is going to be a bench dedication for Psych Tossie, so his family will be attending, there'll be a special ceremony. I'm not sure where the bench is going right now, but the money has been raised, and the bench has been ordered with the plaque that the family created the script for. The Doyle Field Foundation right now is identifying where that bench will go, and then, so we'll let, we'll let you know when it's happening on that part right there. As we know, a week from this Saturday's the Johnny Appleseed Festival, and it's been a monster this year as far as the ten people that wanna attend, and the advertising, and the raising of funds and everything. I really wanna say thank you to the people in City Hall here, in particular, starting with the mayor's office, they've been very supportive. It's 10, 12 times a day you're tapping into trying to connect with people, and as you know, I've gotta, in order to speak to the chief, I go through Kelly a couple times today, things like that, so they've been very helpful in dealing with that, putting a meeting together. The treasury and collector's office separately have been fantastic, the city clerk's office has been really helpful, especially Sonia, who I talk to probably two or three times a day with finances, she's been, she helps with that, it's a lion's share of work, and the board of health down here as well, just really appreciate it. We've never had so many exciting attendees as far as the vendors are concerned, it's gonna be a great year, there'll be a lot of dignitaries showing up, so you get a chance to meet them, you know, and talk with them. It's been extended to six o'clock in the evening. As we're talking, some of the football players, I'm meeting with some of the kids involved with the Best Buddies Program Lemmonster High School, and they're putting, the pumpkins will be arriving on Wednesday from the hot land of Pennsylvania, from Amish country, and they'll be delivered in the early morning on Saturday, the 22nd. The Lemmonster High has a football game against St. John's that night, and the chair and the kids are all coming down for 6:30, 7 o'clock to help out, so I think that's pretty amazing. And they'll be working the parking lot the entire day. Our hope is to raise a lot of money for the Life Skills Program, it's a K through 12 thing for new initiatives, for field trips and things like that, and also support them for Special Olympics as well, so those kids are all coming together to do that. A lot of school groups, the musical pieces should be great this year, we have a ton of blues, it'll be performing at noon time, followed by Bob Haley's Swing Band Orchestra, and then rhythm will be wrapping up the day, it goes right till six o'clock, so we hope everybody can come down and have a great time. Food's gonna be great, we have everything from Italian to Greek this year, to Spanish food, to all, any kind of American food you can think of, so the food court should be great. I hope it's just a cool day where people can.
Don't forget the chili.
Have some, we got the clam chowder over the, you know, those, these guys have been there forever too, so thank you very much for all you do. So, with that being said, any other items? Okay, we have a table petition upon which action is proposed, I'll yield the floor to Council Frida, Council Dobrowski has abstained from this, we have 39-18, what is the, what should the chair, the acting chair?
Well, the table, the tabling would be the first discussion.
Right.
And if I could.
Take it off the table?
Go through the clerk to find out if there's a time element on this.
Sure, go ahead.
So previously, when we put this on the table, we also voted to continue the public hearing, so as long as we do not close the public hearing, there's no time constraint.
To the chair, Mr. President, I'd rather wait until the other member of Legal Affairs is here.
Okay, I respect that. Just so you know, this was a request from the petitioner to take it off, to give it further time for a hearing.
And I wouldn't have a problem doing that tonight, but seeing because Counselor Dobrowski is abstaining.
Yep, absolutely. That's, that's a good move. Okay, so we're not gonna take that off the table this evening, we'll wait till Council Bonanza comes back, and then you'll have a, you'll have a committee representation to make that decision, thank you. Any other items before the council? If not, yes, Council Frida?
I just wanted to make a comment about dining under the stars last week. If anybody popped through there, it was incredible how many tables and chairs were set out, how many people were mulling around, and the intent was to help the businesses down that end of town with the Columbia and Auntie Ellen's and Mezcal. Certainly did the trick, because people were buying and sitting, sitting out, eating whatever they purchased, though, and it was packed.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, great point. Anything else? Council Feckley, go ahead.
At one point, and I don't know, we don't have old business on the agenda.
Right.